Okay, what's up y'all? I am working on this same problem that we ended with on the last session. Which I got stumped on for some reason, seems a lot easier today. Okay, so here's the situation, we have a line y equals one half x and this is formatted kinda weirdly, but this is one half times x. And the prob- uh, and a parabola which is given by y equals k times x squared. And so this is a bound finite region, I'm just gonna do the first quadrant here. So here's our line, let's call this one half x, and then here is some parabola. Okay, so we're trying to define k, uh, so that this area is equal to three. Alright, so what we have to do is we have to figure out our bounds of integration first. Okay, we need to figure out, this is a definite integral, the definite integral is gonna be equal to three. So we want to figure out our bounds that'll make that so, right? So that's gonna happen where those two graphs intersect, okay? Now it's pretty easy to see that one of those intersections is gonna be at x equals zero, right? This, this line y equals one half x goes through the origin, so we'll integrate from zero to something here, and so that's gonna be the other place where it's equal, and so what we do is we set one half x. And you could generate both of these bounds by doing this process, uh, we set one half x equal to k x squared. The reason we do this is because where these two things are equal, it is an intersection, okay? The x value where this occurs gives us the intersection. Alright, so now this is a quadratic, so we have to be careful that we don't lose a root here by like dividing by x or something like that. Okay, we have to subtract everything over to both, uh, over to the same side. Alright, and I made that mistake on like a differential equations test in, in university and felt real dumb, cuz this isn't, uh, an easier problem on, on the scale of things. Okay, so here we can see that we can factor out an x. And we're left with k x minus one half equal to zero. No, this root, we already have this root, that, that's where we got this from, I just eyeballed it and I could tell, uh, because the line goes to the origin. It's y intercept is zero, uh, so we'll just solve for the other root, k x minus one half equals zero. So, uh, solving for x, we get, uh, x equals one over two k. Nope, not x. Two k, okay, so that is our other bound. Now, it's not important that we don't know what this is yet, and we fully expect that we don't know what that is equal to. We're gonna make, uh, an equation to help use that to generate our, our, our k that that gives us the area equal to three. Okay, so what is the area between these two things? It's gonna be given by the integral of the upper minus the lower, right? And in this case, the line is the upper, okay, so one half x minus, uh, k x squared dx, so this is what we're trying to integrate. Now, this is a definite integral, so we'll be able to evaluate it and set it equal to three. So let's, let's integrate and then we'll evaluate. So the integral of one half x is gonna be one over four, actually, let me make it x squared, so we're gonna go up by one here, which means we have to divide by another factor of two, so this becomes x squared over four, okay? And then, this is gonna go, uh, to the x cubed, so we've gotta divide here by three. Alright, this is going to be evaluated, I like this notation, if you haven't seen this notation. We're gonna evaluate this definite integral from zero to one over two k. So, we don't even need to write this zero, because we have an x and an x, so this is gonna zero out, we'll just do the first term. So, um, we're gonna do one over two k squared over four minus k thirds times one over two k cubed, alright? So this becomes one over two to the fourth k squared minus k thirds times one over two to the third k to the third. So now we're gonna get some cancellation, one of these k's will go with this k, alright? And then let's take this up here, um, this is gonna give us one over two to the fourth k squared minus one over three times two to the third k squared. Okay, so this is, this is what our definite integral evaluates to, right? But we know that we want this to be equal to three, that's, that's the whole premise of this problem, like how do we make this k uh, give our area three? How, what, what k can we choose so that our area equals three? So I'll just set it equal to three, because that's the condition that I want, I wanna determine k such that this is true. So this, this should generate the k that gives us this, okay? Um, so how can we solve this? I'm gonna multiply the entire expression so that these cancel out. So I see I have a factor of three here, I need to get a three involved. And I've got two to the fourth and two to the third, so I'm gonna choose two to the fourth, cuz that'll get rid of both of them. And then I've got k squared and k squared, so I'm gonna go k squared, alright? So I'm gonna multiply this entire equation through. So, in this first term, two to the fourth cancels, k squared cancels, so I'll be left with a three. And this, the three cancels, uh, two to the third will cancel with three of these factors of two in here, and I'll just be left with a two. And the k squared's also cancels, so this will be minus two. And this will be equal to three times all of this mess, so three squared times two to the fourth times k squared, okay? And so this is a nice example of how you can use your, um, exponent rules to simplify calculations. Like you may have wanted to put this down to like sixteen and, and what is that, uh, twenty-four? But that would be way harder to find this common denominator, so prime factorizations are really nice, get used to those, okay? They're, they will help you. Okay, so one equals, um, three minus two is one, equals three squared times two to the fourth times k squared. And so we can just solve for k squared here, uh, k squared equals one over three squared minus, oh wait, something oh, no, we're good, three squared times, uh, two to the fourth. And that implies, actually, let me make some room, cuz I think I have the picture and picture in the way. Um, so this is, so I'm starting from k squared equals one over three squared times two to the fourth. Two to the fourth, alright. So that implies that k equals plus or minus the square root of this mess, which is one over three times two squared. And you can see that this is really easy to take the square root of now, because I left it factored as primes, uh, which is another reason why you would wanna do that. Uh, now, so, let's take the positive here, and you, you can do this, if you chose k negative, you get a parabola that was, um, concave down. And, um, that doesn't work, we, we, we would get that, uh, three over here, which is not what we're looking for, so we'll just get rid of that, throw it out. But you know, if you plugged in the, the negative k over here, you would actually, well, you know, let's see, let's, let's do both of them. So, this becomes, this is equal to plus or minus one over twelve, okay, there we have it. So, we can let's update our little graph here. We're gonna get two possible graphs. So, I will do both of them. Oh, maybe I should, let me quickly open up this chat. See if Amino is back in here, oh, this, this question is for Amino, um, I think I'm sending it right, hopefully. Okay. Alright, nobody's in here, so that's okay. Hopefully he, or she, or whoever, they comes and checks this out later. Alright, so alright, so here's our axes. Here is our line, let's call that, I'm not gonna put a scale, so it doesn't matter. And then, I'll draw in two colors our, our possible, um, parabolas, so one would be here and one would be here, oops. It's really hard to draw parabolas on the computer. And then, let's do blue for our other one. And so the other one would be like this. That's a perfect symmetric parabola. You're very welcome. So we're looking for one of two regions, right? We're looking for this region and we're looking for this region, okay? Which are allegedly both equal to three. And okay, so we got plus or minus, so this is our integral, okay? So our integral is going to be from zero to something times one half x minus, uh, let's go positive k here, so minus one over twelve x squared dx, okay, so this is this region. Now, let us figure out what one over two k is, so one over two k is, is the bound of integration that we have here. It's one over two k, but k equals one over twelve, so this is one over two times one over, uh, twelve. Okay, which is equal to twelve or two, which equals six, alright? So this is gonna be from zero to six. Now, we can do the same thing using the negative root that we got here, okay? And so the other, uh, thing that will generate this is going to be from zero to negative six, right, just plugging in negative one over twelve will give you that. And then we would have one half x. Um, so minus a minus would give us a plus, one over twelve x squared dx. So either one of these will give you the solution that you're looking for, um, which is super cool. And hopefully that, that actually solved your problem. It, so I see someone in the chat now, Amino, if that's you, just let me know whether or not your problem is, uh, solved, if that, if that did it for you. Otherwise, we can try and clear it up. And, I'm gonna cruise through really quickly and see if there are interesting problems in the homework help subreddit, but if, if there are not, I'll probably just do some calculus studying of my own. Since I, I am trying to get ready for grad school, I'm terrible at calculus. And you know, if you guys come along and you're checking this video out, please, please, please subscribe, um, comment, all of those things, it'll help my channel get noticed. Which it seems like this could be a good thing for me, if it did, since, uh, it's increasingly hard to work as a tutor during the coronavirus pandemic. Alright. Statistics, I don't wanna do statistics. Try this logarithms one, I saw this earlier, I, I wanted to jump right on that one, but I wanted to start with that, uh, start with that question that Amino had asked last time. Took me a while to get to it, okay, let's see if it's answered. Take the log of both sides, whatever. This is nice, whoever did this is great, this is really vixeric, user vixeric, uh, let me, leave him a nice comment. Alright, actually, first let me check to make sure that it's correct. Five, two x minus one, four, minus three. Yeah, so take the log of both sides. Beautiful, I would put one more step in there, but you know, this, this is perfect, um, anyway. Actually, let me see, this should be, okay, so this is maybe I would be careful with this right here. But, you know, because if you don't put those parentheses around there, you can't tell that five is the argument of this function, right? So it looks like this is the log of five x instead of the log of five times x, but this user actually then went ahead and, and did this. Um, and let me just make sure this is, this is three. And, and so, interestingly, they put the, the coefficients out front, or the, the constants out front, but the x they put on this side. So three, they subtracted over, they added over, factored. And then divided, that's brilliant, this is really nice. Okay, I like log rules, I, I was very uncomfortable with them when I first learned them. And then I had to figure it out to tutor people. And so now they just like, they simplify calculations so much. In, um, Feynman's autobiography, he talks about memorizing log tables to, to simplify approximations and calculations. And I think that is a really interesting idea that I may do. Okay, let's see if it's answered. Okay, so this is, so we're simplifying, what do we do, we're simplifying, okay, so negative eight, negative four, square both sides, x plus four equals sixteen. So, x equals twelve. Oh, huh, yeah, that's a problem, so twelve plus, so yeah, we need a, we need an imaginary solution. Yeah, I don't think that works. Yep, anyway, let's move on, okay, I'm gonna do calculus. It should work. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna study for a while. So I think I was working on substitution problems. So I had done this one. Okay, I don't know if I did this, let's, anyway, I remember this one. Issue is that, since I did them on the computer, I don't have them in my notebook. Alright, let's do them over, couldn't hurt. Alright, so we're gonna do five point three five. Oh yeah, that one's highlighted, which means I was, that's when I was talking about the highlighting feature of this website, which is really cool. Both the feature and the website are great. My, um, computer has gotten extremely slow recently, and I don't know what I did. The battery's starting to go bad, it's kind of an old computer. Alright, anyway, that's the wrong one. So like when I add an image here from a screenshot, it takes a second before, oh, there you go, before Finder can like show it in, in the window that pops up when you click add image. Alright, so, using substitution with an exponential function, use substitution to evaluate this guy. Okay, so we've got a definite integral from zero to one. And so let's, I see that x is gonna be an, uh, constant multiple of the derivative of this guy. So I'm gonna let you equal four x squared plus three. And that implies that du is equal to eight x dx, okay? And then, so we can, um, solve for x dx, since I hear I have x dx, and that's what I wanna substitute for. So I'll divide both sides by eight, and I get x dx equal to one eighth du, alright? So, I can rewrite my integral, well, actually, well, let's figure out our bounds. So when, uh, x equal to zero implies that u equals three. I did that by plugging in the zero here and solving, and simplifying, right? And then when x equals one, this implies that u equals four times one squared, one squared is one, four times one is four, plus three is seven. There we have, so these are new bounds here, uh, and you don't have to do that, you could just substitute back at the end. But, I don't know, I'm, I'm practicing with this for now, since I don't usually do that. Okay, so we have from, uh, three, and you gotta make sure not to switch this up, so do, since our, our lower boundary is zero, that corresponds to three, and we switch it to u. And our upper is, uh, one, and that corresponds to seven, and we switch to u, so we gotta make sure those correspond, that's an easy mistake to make. And so, our, uh, substitution gives us e to the u, right? Here's u, here's u. And then, this is one eighth du, so we have to remember, and, and I'm really bad at remembering this, to put that constant factor out there. So one eighth du. You could've written it here, but the, the constant moves through the integral, so it's, it's fine, uh, we'll just put it on the outside. Alright, so, one eighth times, the integral of this is just du plus c, but we're doing a definite integral, so we can just evaluate from three to seven, okay, so this is gonna be one eighth times e to the seventh minus e to the three. Uh, and we can check that, let's see if, I like these exercises, okay, perfect, then they actually, um, evaluate this, which I don't think is super important to know what the approximation is, I just like to leave them at the exact value. Since approximations are for suckers and engineers. Okay. So u substitution to evaluate, so here, let me, I wish there was like a faster way to paste these into this thing. Alright, add an image. Okay, I probably did this one already, but that's fine. Practice makes perfect, okay, so this one is from zero to one. And I can see here that if we take the derivative of this x cubed, we're gonna get something x squared, so this is a constant multiple of x squared. So that's gonna be, uh, this, this argument of the cosine function is going to be my u. So I'm gonna say let u equal to pi halves x cubed, okay? So then from this, we know that du equals, um, so this is gonna be three pi over two x squared dx. And so this is what we wanna substitute for, so I'll divide both sides by the constant term here. And that gives me that two over three pi du equals x squared dx, okay? And then, we did a u substitution, so I'm gonna change the bounds of integration. When x equals zero, this implies that u equals, so pi over two times zero cubed is equal to zero. And when x equals one, this implies that u equals, so pi over two times one cubed is just pi over two. And then we can rewrite our integral using substitution, from zero to pi over two. Uh, and, and so here is, here is the substitution for that, right? So I'm gonna write the constant multiple out, out front. Just skip a step here, and I'll substitute, uh, that in for x squared dx, so I will get cosine of u, right? Here's my u times du, and, and that's also part of the du substitution, which we don't wanna forget. Okay, so this is easy to integrate now, so we've got two over three pi times sine of u evaluated from zero to pi over two. Alright, so this is equal to two over three pi. Uh, sine of pi over two is one, and sine of zero is zero, so this becomes two over three pi. And let's see if we got it right, so we have checkpoint three point oh. Um, so the check, all the checkpoints and all of the odds are in the answer key of this book, so this book is super, super, super good. I really like it, it's a pleasure to read, it reads it very easily, it doesn't have a bunch of stupid pictures that aren't related to what you're talking about. Okay, and so we've got it right, which is cool, I like that, I like it, the answer's right. Okay, so, we're on five point three six. Why don't, let's see if there are any questions, I'm just gonna do a quick check to see if we can get some folks watching this live stream. Have I did this before, so I did reddit.com slash homeworkhelp, and, maybe we'll do cheat at math next. My friend's an idiot. But he's very funny. Alright. Boom, 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 I guess I could try for some physics ones, but I really just don't want to. Uh, five comments, nine comments, seven comments, I do probability or statistics. So how do I consider binomials? I don't know what they're talking about here. Find the product of the binomials. f of x and g of x, okay, so yeah. Alright, let's do this one. And I saw something that I didn't notice before here. What, I mean, where, where is the stream now right now, I guess you can't really, so let's say twenty-nine minutes? Does that work? I don't know how to make that happen. Let's see. Let's see if we can get that here. Working on your problem in my live stream. Um, no, that didn't work. Okay, I'm gonna start at twenty-nine. Okay, maybe I shouldn't do that, maybe I should trick people into watching as much as possible, but I want people to like and subscribe and do all those things, but gotta give watch hours up. I want people to like and subscribe and do all those things, but gotta give watch hours up. Alright, current viewer zero, that's harsh. Okay, we have this one is what I'm working on now. And I took a screenshot, I will add that image. If anybody has any suggestions on like an improved workflow for this, I would greatly appreciate that. Please, especially if you are good at YouTube, if you are Youtuber already and you know how to work this website. Um that would just be spectacular if you could give me advice, okay, here it is. Alright. So. Next major thing I wanna do is get a second s- uh screen. So that I can um just kind of just share that entire screen. I have a couple of workarounds, like how to show my mouse and things like that, but. Um I would prefer to just like show a separate screen so I can isolate, you know, what I'm doing. Uh behind the scenes on on my main desktop. Alright, so find the product of the binomials, okay, so these these two. Functions here are binomials, this is F and G, it I, okay, so blue is F and red is G. Um so we gotta figure out what these equations are for these lines. There's a couple different ways we can do it, we can um look at the the slope and the intercept. Or you know, we can do um point slope form. Uh so let's let's calculate the slope for F, so here's um the M of F, so this is a slope of F. This is equal to the change in Y over the change in X, okay, the change in Y over the change in X. I'm gonna choose this is my point one and this is my point two. So I want the change in Y, delta means change, this triangle is a delta, okay, over the change in X. And we can remember this uh by rise overrun. So it doesn't matter if you Y two or Y one first, just as long as you can keep it consistent for the Xs and the Ys. So I'll say Y one minus Y two, which is the difference in the Y, the change in the Y over X one minus X two. Okay, this is fine, however, if I did Y one over, Y one minus Y two over X two minus uh. X one, I would have a problem there, okay, so keep that in mind. Then we can prove that if anybody, if you guys pop in the chat, tell me you want me to prove it, I will prove it. I will convince you thoroughly. Every time I look in the chat, I just see myself, uh and also one active person, which is me. So I have the chat up on my phone. Okay. What am I do, okay, so F. So let's choose this one negative three as uh point one. So we'll do negative three minus three over one minus negative two. And so we can simplify this, this is negative three minus three is negative six. And one minus a negative two is three, so this is negative six over three. Which is equal to negative two, okay, so our slope for F is negative two. Now, same formula, I'm not gonna write it again, but we want the slope of G this time, so I'm using this little G subscript, F subscript here. Okay, so uh our slope formula, that's it, I'm gonna reuse the same formula. I'll choose this is point one and this is point two, since it doesn't matter, and I get five minus one. Over two minus a negative two. Okay, five minus one is four, two minus a negative two is the same as two plus two. And so this becomes four also, so our slope is equal to one. Now I am going to choose um the slope intercept, or yeah, we'll do the slope intercept form, that's the Y equals M X plus B. Okay, here's the slope that we calculated and let's actually, let's do Y F, okay, this is uh, or actually, we can just say F X, okay. Here F of X, right, since they gave it to us in in function notation. F of X equals M sub F, right, the slope that corresponds to that uh function, times X. Plus B, right, and we just figure out what B is, we can just eyeball it here, it looks like it intersects with this point here, that's that's our Y intercept B. Okay, anyway, that's not F, this is F. So B is equal to negative one. Which means we will make this negative one. Um, oh, I should, actually. So MF is uh negative two. At times X and then plus B, where B is negative one, so this becomes minus one. And then, so this is F of X. And then G of X, we'll just use the same formula, right? Uh use our slope for G, which is one times X, we can just write X, uh plus B, now here B is three. So we'll do plus three. So here is F of X and here is G of X. Now, we want to find the product of the binomials. Now, a product is the result of a multiplication, so I will write negative two X minus one. Multiplied by X plus three. Here is F of X, here is G of X, the entire expression is the product of F. F of X times G of X, now I'm assuming, okay, so they said write it in standard form. Um so this is gonna be a quadratic, I can tell because I'm gonna have an X times an X, which gives me an X squared, that'll be the highest degree. And let's just write it in that uh I th- what I think is the standard form, well, you know, it, you can Google that. Okay, so we distribute, so first. So negative two X squared and then orders. So this will become negative six X and then inters. Negative one X and then last. That this becomes negative three, okay, and we will take this guy and we will simplify. So we get negative two X squared uh minus six minus X. Or so negative six X minus X is negative seven X and then negative three. Okay, here is your solution, that's you right there, um I I don't know if you actually ever came into the chat. You didn't come into this chat, that's okay, that's okay, hopefully you'll see this, um I'm glad I provided the time hack so that you don't have to like. Look through this entire stream and find your thing. Um I'm pretty sure that's standard form too, so. Uh hope that helps, if if it did help, please like, subscri- subscribe, I'll put in the. Video description, my Patreon, if anyone's feeling froggy and wants to give me a dollar, uh that would be great, thank you for the dollar. If you so choose to give me a dollar. That would be straight fire, as the kids say. Alright, let's see if there are any other good ones in here before I still go back to calculus. Math logic, this might be cool. What is X and Y for, ooh, some jump, oh, but everybody answered that already. Alright, maybe this one's cool, let's see. Wow, bro, okay, use the digits one through nine once only to make this addition problem correct. How many solutions can you find, I really don't wanna do that. Yeah, definitely don't wanna do that. I think my steps are correct, but not sure. Um I get really, 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 really annoyed with people memorizing steps, it bothers me a lot. Um because it's just not the right way to think about it, you know, you you spend a lot of your like memorizing. Which is a f- a limited thing, like you can only memorize so many things, especially in a short period of time. When if you just thought conceptually, you'd be able to work through it here on your own. You know, you just take what's given to you and think of it as a puzzle and you would solve it. So don't memorize steps, people. There is a camera on a tower forty meters above the road, okay? The camera rotates in order to film the arrival of a car. The car is moving along the road. Directly toward the tower at constant speed of ten meters per second. How fast is the camera rotating in radians per second? At the instant the car, okay, this is, there's a lot of problems with this, I really don't wanna do this, cuz we have to simplify it to such a huge degree. Alright, the car is moving along the road toward the direction, directly toward the tower. At constant speed of ten meters per second, how fast is the camera rotating in radians per second? The instant the car is ninety six meters from the base of the tower. Alright, well, let's do it. I wanna take a screenshot of this, but sometimes there I guess, sometimes it just freezes. This person did a lot of work and uh I think that's really cool that they attempted this. And so that makes me like much more inclined to wanna help them with their problem. Um that they put a lot of work in. It's good to puzzle over things, you know, oh, actually, let me let him know I'm working on it. Uh where are we, we are at forty forty one, so. Okay, so let's draw a picture, I think pictures are illuminating in some ways. Oddly, I don't like graphs, but I do like pictures, so here we have a tower, boom. At the top is a camera, it's aiming this direction, here's a road, here's a car. Car's driving in this direction, towards the base of the tower. Um so super good picture. So duh 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 duh, the car is moving at a constant linear speed of ten meters per second. And so I'm gonna I'm gonna call this negative ten, uh because I'm gonna define left is negative. And then we need to figure out how fast the camera is rotating in radians per second. So we want the the rate of change of this, okay? And we wanna know when, what is the rate of change at the precise moment that the car is ninety six meters away from the. The. Base of the tower, which is this distance here, um the tower is forty meters tall. Okay, so we know that the tangent of theta. Is equal to. Let's let's actually call. This X here, so X is equal to ninety six, but we wanna we wanna call it X for the purpose of this. Um thing and and I'll explain that in a second, so uh tangent of theta. Is equal to X over forty, okay? Now, the reason why we want this. Is because we are gonna do an implicit differentiation. And uh we wanna get a DX out of this. Um so we can plug in that, that's our DX, okay, that's the rate of change of the motion in this direction. Okay, let's do a differentiation, so I I'll I'll solve for X and then differentiate, so. X equals forty tan theta and then this will be uh DX or X DX. I know, we're gonna take the derivative of theta with respect to X. Let me think through this. Oh, with time, that's why, okay, so we're gonna take the derivative with respect to time of the entire thing. Because it's rates of change involving time, okay, so this becomes DX DT. And this becomes forty, um so this will become, what is it, secant squared theta. Theta D theta DT, okay, so a little implicit differentiation there. And then we just make sure that that is true, yeah, it's true, okay, so then. Uh and so this derivative there from tangent of theta to secant squared of theta. Look in that OpenStax textbook that I'm using in the stream earlier and it gives a nice proof of that, uh like a little walkthrough. But yeah, that's a good thing to know. Okay, so now we are trying to figure out what D theta is, so so now we need to figure out what is secant. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna take this over and. This is going to be, let's solve for D theta here, so we're gonna get D theta DT equal to. One over forty uh times one over secant squared, which is. Uh one over one over cosine squared, so just cosine squared, so we can rewrite this as. Cosine squared theta over forty DX DT. Alright, um maybe that's a little, that's kind of, I should I should actually do some steps there for you. So let's see, we can rewrite this is DX DT equal to forty. Secant squared is one over cosine squared, so this is cosine squared theta. Theta DT, okay, now I'll multiply by cosine squared, divide by forty. And I get D theta DT equal to cosine squared theta over forty. Times DX DT, okay, now. These are all known quantities, right, we know this, we're given this, that's here. And then we can look at our triangle and figure this out, okay? So let's look at D theta DT equal to, so what's cosine squared, right? So cosine squared is going to be adjacent over hypotenuse, okay? We can figure out our hypotenuse, let's call this H, H equals the square root. Of forty squared plus ninety six squared. Uh square rooted, okay, so this is. Sixteen hundred, uh I'm not gonna do that. Nine two one six. Eight sixteen, let's see, is that a perfect square root? Oh, yes, okay, so uh this is plus. Nine two one six, nine two one six, and you square root this and this gives you one oh four, okay, so that's cool. Alright, so our cosine of theta is forty over one oh four. So this is forty over one oh four. Squared, since we're dealing with cosine squared, over forty, times DX, which is negative ten meters per second. And then, let's see, can we simplify, so this will be forty over one oh four squared. And this will be times negative ten meters per second. Um so actually, let me just. Do this in the calculator, so negative four hundred divided by one oh four squared. Is. Oh, this is, this should be. This is meters. And this is, okay, so we get a meters from here, meters from here. So our meters will cancel, uh this is unitless because it's comes from, it's just a ratio, that the ratio of two sides from that cosine. I hope that makes sense, and so this. Radians um per second, so this is, I don't know, like. Negative point. Zero point uh zero three six nine eight, I think that's enough, some more. You can round to whatever. Radians per second, so yeah, that's a cool little problem. Oh, yeah, you probably can't see that. Oh, yeah, you probably can't see that, sorry. I, I forget that I've got this picture in picture on. Um so, I don't know, there, hopefully you can see that. I don't know if, if you guys let me know, like, does my face add anything to this? I think my voice is annoying, I'm less annoyed with my face, but. Yeah, so there you go. If uh. That helped, please like, subscribe, comment, all those things. There's, should be a Patreon link in the description, so if you wanna give me a dollar, give me a dollar, I would appreciate that. I think studying math, I ended up taking a vow of poverty. Which maybe isn't the coolest thing ever, but. That's what I'm doing. Alright. Let's see if we got any other good questions in here. Oh, got some trig with only four comments. Uh let's check this one, I don't know what this is. Find one more good one and then I'll do some more problems. Oh, no answers, okay. Nope, no, not for me, I'm good. Yeah. I just don't like statistics and I'm also not that good at it. Let's try this one. How is the stream quality? My internet is just not doing good right now. Comments that might be good to go. For some reason, the auto moderator in the subreddit just writes so many comments on every post. Your ten maths, serds, I don't know that they clip, the ellipses. Continuation in the pattern, oh, the ellipses indicates a continuation of the pattern. One over root five plus root six plus one over root six plus root seven, et cetera, all continued until. This question has me stumped, stumped. Probably stopped me too, frankly. Oh my god. Can we rotate? No. I don't even wanna like, what is this? I can't read your handwriting, friend. Oh, great, okay, so somebody already got it. This is such a good community, this subreddit. Vertical asymptotic, okay, so this is. Okay, so they are answered. I actually am not familiar with this. Two sine X over, okay. Hmm, I'm not sure what this means. Let's see. Yeah, I think this is. So this is cosine over sine. Oh, I see, okay, so this person used the uh. A half angle identity. But. What is this G? I have no idea. So we wanna figure out what this is. Oh, yeah, that's great, yeah. Wonder if the person was able to. I might work on this later, but I'm not gonna, I'll keep it open, I'm not gonna do it live. What, what to do? That might be interesting. In the street of one hundred fifty houses, three different newspapers are delivered, TGNM of these houses, forty receive T. Thirty receive G and sixty receive M. Seven receive T and G, oh, this is system of equations, let's see. Oh, yeah, Venn diagram would work, let me think about this, so there's a hundred fifty, so. T plus G plus M equals one fifty is one equation. Oh yeah, you need a Venn diagram. Yeah. What math is this, IG CSE, I'm not familiar with that at all. All the M works have to be delivered until Thursday, December twelve, described activities. Okay, I don't care about that. Region defined by these three points, then find the area of the transformed region. I usually determine, oh, yeah. No optimal solutions exist. Oh nice, this is a straight up screenshot from one of those send gauge things. Solve the LP problem. If no optimal solution, oh, linear program, it's LP, no optimal solutions exist, indicate whether the feasible region is empty. Or the objective function is unbound, hit see example one, enter empty if the region is empty. Enter unbounded if the function is unbound, is anybody else? Yeah. Yeah, not interesting. Household object that's in the shape of a triangular pyramid. I love this, I love this. Oh, that's great, the roof of your house, nice. That's not right, though. An iron, uh maybe. Ah, these people are great, I love this community. Boom 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 boom, find the equation of the parabola with a focus at zero, negative one and a vertex at four. Negative one. Hmm, okay, let's see. We're doing parabola. Oh. They're completing the score. That's true. I think that, I, I don't know if it makes a difference, but I think you should divide by four first. Let's do some my own problems. Okay. Did we do this one? No, we didn't, substitution may be only one of the techniques needed to evaluate a definite arrow. All the properties and rules of integration apply independently. And trigonometric functions may need to be writ- rewritten using a trigonometric identity. Before we can apply substitution. Okay, so what if we say this is? Okay, yeah, this will work. Maybe. Will it? Okay. That's smart. Is it good? Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna stop after this problem, at least for a while. Alright, well. Maybe we'll uh. Pick this back up later.